Yeah, we're good.
Can I get a motion to reconvene to regular meeting of the proviso attached to Board of Education? Second. Jennifer, call her on.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. O'Pamplum?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson? Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Will Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Barbman, aye. Motion carried. We are in open session at six thirty nine P M.
At this time, the Board of Education offers a floor for public comment. The board will receive public comment from any individuals present. This evening, and has submitted a request to address the board per the established procedures. Comments will be limited to three minutes and according to the board policy two, two thirty. We believe that our participants in the meeting desire the best outcome for our students, families, and communities. As a reminder, this meeting is being livestreamed. It will also be archived and available on the district website.
Uh, first comment is Napita William.
Napita.
Napita.
Hi, how you doing, board?
Good to be here, bud. Been a long journey over there, District two oh nine, but I'm glad, uh, glad, um, in this district because of our, you know, these kids. Um, I started the flag football team with Coach Vick, another, um, coach over at Proviso West, with, um, the Chicago Bears. And we did it for two years without stifles, without anything. I built a good team, um, for two years. It was the second year I was out injured for, for, um, doing security and protecting Miss Martinez walking through the hallway, too scared to walk through it. And she knew, he knew it. And I got two hernia discs, three hernia discs in my neck, a broken finger, a torn ACL, and a hernia disc in my spine. So I left for six months. But I came back early because I got a new position where I thought I could help more, be able to have more contact with the kids to help them gather in the district when I became a behavioral institutionist. This year will be our third year doing flag football, and now it'll be an I S H, I S H A sport, which is great for my kids because they've been with me since they were freshmen, now they're juniors, you know, scholarships, nine scholarships. And Sarah was calling me in to do the interview for, for wrestling and football. We gave me wrestling as the head coach, which you know, wrestling has been the top sport in Proviso West. We had more and more tournaments and more, um, um, games and everything more than any sport. And we have a state champ now, which they haven't had in ten years. And three of my girls want, have state champ, state, um, championships, first, second, and third in Springfield. And they only come wrestling six months. All my girls that wrestle went into sectionals their first six months. So the sport is doing what it does, keeping their grades up and also giving them confidence. She asked me a question while I was the coach in October. I said, Coach Vick took a lot of things from my kids. They don't have, they don't have social skills, skills. They don't have communicate no more. They don't have confidence. Most of our kids depressed, especially the kids at East, because I work there. And they don't, they don't believe in themselves. All they know how to do is fight because they think that's what we looking at first. But no, we're not. We want academic scholars. We want star athletes. We want to bring that back to our kids. And that's why I came back to help with that. But every time I'm doing it, it'll shut down. It's a man, it's a manager against me all the time. So now that I've come to Miss Martinez's office to tell her about the flag foot, football sport, she tells me we never had it. I said, yes, we, yes, we do. We did it for two years. Now, who the principal? How you gonna learn about the sport? She went, why? She never been to no games, no football, no basketball, nothing. We never seen her. She never come off her office. So how would you know we have, because you never support them? So in the new interview, you ask me, what did I learn from you, uh, supporters? Come on, tell our kids they doing something good with it.
Thank you, Ms. William. We can answer.
Is there extra two minutes I could decide for?
You have to ask for that before.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Gregory Harden?
I'm speaking for Ms. Webb, too. I was bringing up, bringing it to her games and stuff like that. Oh, yeah. To her games and everything. So I'm a junior rep for the team shirt, seven twenty seven, and I represent a lot of people for Coca-Cola. But, uh, she, she did a lot of hard work with these kids. I'm looking for that. And, uh, I think that she needs the opportunity. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Uh, Miracle?
Um, hi, I'm Miracle. And I think that, um, we should have her as a coach because like she has built this team from day one, and a lot of us are comfortable talking to her about any problems we have. I don't really know, like, the other lady. So like, I feel like you can't just come and say, oh, I'm gonna coach, when you don't even know the girl's on the team yet. You just have a signed papers thinking that we're signing up for flag football since we filled out a football waiver, which was supposed to be fixed. But when you have us just signing papers and not telling us what it is, I don't find that very, like, supporting or very nice. Like, that's not the year at all. And that wasn't like something you should have did without explaining to us what we were signing. She was basically have to sign up to vote for her, which since we all got that under control, we don't want her as our coach. We want Coach China. And that's who we're comfortable with coaching us. And if we're comfortable with her, I don't understand why we have to go through all of this stuff just because another person wants to just jump in and be the coach, when we already been at practice and learned some stuff from her, and she says we're really good and we're learning. She's who I look up to right now, and she's my favorite in the building. And she's who I want to keep looking up to. She's the one I want to go to when I have a problem at practice or in school. She's the one who has helped me and helped me understand this is what I want to do when I grow up. I like football a lot. And like, I know a lot of other girls, they like it too. So like, um, we, we want Coach China.
See, I've got one question because you're a student. What, what, what documents you were signing? What, what do you mean? Somebody asked you to sign something.
Okay, so she basically like-
Who was she?
The, uh, she's a math teacher, but I don't remember her name. But some of the other girls do, because she's not my math teacher. So I don't know her. I have a boy as a math teacher. But she had-
What would, no, what were you signing?
Like, she had to sign like a paper. But I didn't sign it because she's not my math teacher, but I was gonna go up to her today and see what that was about and like record it for like evidence or whatever. But like, she had my friends, which they're on their way now, so they'll tell you more about it. She had them sign like a paper, which we thought was for flag football, like, because we already had this flag football, like, we went to the first practice. After that first practice, she started calling herself the coach, which she was never even there. So when we had got like to that point where we signed up, we thought we were signed up for the flag football. Like I said, we had filled out the waiver for football, which wasn't what we were supposed to fill out. So that had took away one of our practices. Then did this part, but it happened again. That's what we figured out. She was trying to have us vote for her by putting our name and phone number down.
Thank you. Uh, Tamiana? Tamiana, thank you.
Hi, I'm, um, first, person who does flag football. I've been doing this for three and a half years, since my third year here. And the first year I've been with Coach China, I was really shy and I didn't like, I don't talk to people that much. But she made me feel very comfortable and like she helped me so much because I wanted to do foot, football my whole year, like coming to, um, like I want, okay, I didn't play football because I want to go pro. And she's like helping me very much on doing that. And I think, I think like she has, sorry, I don't know, I'm lost the ways of them. But- She, um, so there like, I'm not really a most communicative person and the people helped me, even if him from my teammates has helped me throughout the years. And I know she said that she wasn't in faith, but either way, if she's in faith or not, I still want her to be my flag football coach. And I don't want somebody who's trying to like be another flag football coach because me personally, I feel like, I don't know if they're doing the job that she does. I don't feel like she, she, I'll be as comfortable as I am with her than with them. I feel like since I've been with her more, I'm more comfortable. But this new person, I don't, I don't personally know them. I don't know them at all. So, yeah.
Ms. Carrie and Henry?
That's one of the top wrestlers, the two you just talked to. Oh, and Nika too.
Hello, I'm here on behalf of Ms. Lydens. And I'm here because I believe she, she, she should be our coach because she has a strong dedication for us. She wants us to put, she's pushing us to our best, our very best. And like she said, um, our principal, our head supervisor West, and our principal has not been to many of our things. I wrestle and I'm going to be flag. And all of my meets, home or not, I did not see her. She was not there to support us, but who was there? Coach China. Coach China was there supporting us through everything. She supported us through school, our wrestling, flag, whatever. And she wants nothing but the best for us. And I feel like personally, you can't just kick her out of it because she's built a relationship with her students, with her, uh, players. And just kicking her off of that, like, that's not, that's not right. That's not okay. And I feel like she should have more respect. And, thank you.
Leela Dogan?
That's Amber. You doing fine.
Um, so, actually, I'm pretty good on the application, but, um, I'm Amber. Um, I'm new to Proviso West. Um, I came here in my junior year. I was previously at Phillips High School. So I really didn't know any of the teachers or the staff. So when I joined wrestling, I found my safe spot at the school. Um, Coach Chi, oh, Coach China has painstakingly developed this team from the ground up and has been countless hours and val, valous energy without any financial reward. For two years, she has worked on them, driven solely by her deep commitment and love for the sport. Her tireless dedication has been a cornerstone of our team, our team's success and her departure with being in this loss. Letting her go now will not only disregard her remarkable contributions, but also undermine her strong foundation she has built with her selfless efforts. Her unwavering support and her personal sacrifices she has made deserves recognition and respect, not dismissal. Not only has she been our flag football coach, but she has also served as a, as the girls wrestling coach, constantly to, supporting us in both sports. She has gone above and beyond making sure we have the man evil of the sports trap to take it from us. Dedicated and endless hours of hard work that we have been ins- that have been instrumental in our journey to the playoffs for flag and regions for girls wrestling. Her commitment and support has been unwavering. And her condition, her co, her, her contribution extends far beyond the feeling that firing her now will be not only disregard, not only disregard the sacrifice, sacrificial blood.
Take it down, boo.
She has played in our achievements, but also diminished the profound, the, the profound impact she has made, she has had on our lives and success.
Karim Bay?
My name is, my name is Karim Bay. Right, yeah. I've, um, I've been coaching in Memorial Park for, I don't know, thirty more, more years. I coached football back, back when, uh, Memorial Park had run the football team and everything. We, we're in everything. I've coached wrestling, boxing, uh, president still coaching boxing, uh, baseball, and I do, does the track. Uh, my, my son is a twenty, twenty-four Olympian, uh, regular woman wrestling. And so when, when China told me that she needed some help, I said, help with what? She said, children. I said, so again, so I'm telling you that if you, you go ahead with her, you get me, alright? So, uh, whatever it is that you need from program, I'm, you know, willing to get it. And if anybody that, you might want to get in contact with, I'm able to do that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, hi. So, um, I've been doing flag football for a year, and this is my second year as a sophomore. And I want to say that when I came with Proviso West, it was hard for me because a lot of people have talked down on the school. And when I saw that this was the first sport that I knew I was gonna do, Coach China made it easy for me to meet new people and, um, talk, like, talk to people, make new friends my freshman year. And it was easier. And that's why I think that it's not fair to not only coach China the football coach, because she really does put passion into, um, the sport and into the teammates.
Sheila Castiel?
I'm very happy that P M S A is here and my daughter has the opportunity to come. I'm happy that there's a program at East and West. But I also want my daughter to have the opportunity to feel safe. She's at West. And I was told that it's a safe environment. But unfortunately, she does not feel safe. I work at River Edge, and when I go in there, it's a mental health facility across the street. I feel safe when I go in there, but it sounds like she does not feel safe. And if I can go to the mental health facility and feel safe, I feel like she should feel safe at her school. And if we cannot provide, provide a safe facility for her to go in, she should have a path to come here in this facility and feel safe. But from what I understand, there's no path. So I would like for there to be a way to look at that and see if we can make a way for kids to transfer if west or east cannot be safe areas for her. In the classroom, she does feel like it's safe, but the, um, cafeteria does not seem like it's safe for her, and the hallways do not feel safe and outside. She's been in school for two weeks, and she's witnessed five, four fights, either in the caf hallways or outside, and one on the bus. I do realize that we may not have control of what's on the bus, but it seems like there should be a way to keep the cafeteria safe. And that should be a basic thing. She's done what I've asked her to do. She's doing well in her classes. She'll get up and she'll get dressed and she'll go to school like I, I've asked her. So as adults, it seems like safety should be our concern. So please, let's look at that for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
May I have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with the proviso's force staff, giving a clarifying compensation of security guards, paraprofessionals, and cafeteria monitors for the term of the current collective bargaining agreement as presented? Jennifer, please call her on.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. O'Pamplum?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson? Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Will Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Barbman, aye. Motion carried.
I have a motion to approve the Adobe Creative Renewal contract for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year as presented.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. O'Pamplum?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson? Ms. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Will Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Barbman, aye. Motion carried.
Does anyone want to pull any items from the personnel report and play, uh? Yes? I want to pull, um, under special payroll, three, employee special payroll, A, number five, special payroll.
Item three A, number five?
Yes, on page two. Also want to pull on the pages. On page number eleven, trying to pull the page number eleven, number forty-five.
Number eleven, number forty-five?
Yes, page eleven, number forty-five. That's gonna be- And that's proviso West stipend B- Proviso West stipend, yes, B, sorry, B forty-five, B forty-six. Anything else? Um, I want to pull, sorry, I have one. Uh, D one?
Is that page number, I think?
Uh, page number three. Also living adjustments. Section three D one.
Sorry, say that wrong?
Section three D one.
It's on page two.
Got it. Okay, got it. I thought that said one. And we need to pull the page thirteen, item number sixty-seven. Cutting off?
So that was section three D fifty-seven?
Yeah, page thirteen. Does that notice?
Okay, so we pull item, um, section three A, number five. Item, section three, proviso West stipend, proviso West stipends B forty-five, B forty-six. Item number three, D one. And item, item number three, proviso West stipend B fifty-seven. I have a motion to approve the personnel report dated August twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four concerning employee hiring assignments compensation and separation that minus, um, section three A five, section three proviso West stipend B forty-five, B forty-six, section three, D one, section three, proviso West stipend B fifty-seven.
I, I think that's like- B five sixty-seven.
Oh, sixty-seven?
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven. Yeah, sixty-seven. Minus all those, sixty-seven. So move.
Uh, Sam, eight fifty-six.
Say it again.
Eight fifty-six, eight F fifty-six?
What section?
Uh, B stipend, eight seven, B fifty-seven.
Okay, so here, and that's-
Which number fifty-six?
Okay, so that's section three A, I mean, under section three proviso East stipend A sixty-seven.
Fifty-six.
Section four, A fifty-six. If you say three, section four, A-
Okay.
A five.
Section four, A five-six.
Um, guys, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, this five, this page I'm in, this five, A fifty-six. Should be four, I think, uh, yeah, it's five, A fifty-six. So make sure the motion is-
Section five, A fifty-six. Let me do this again. May I have a motion to approve the personnel report dated August twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four concerning employee hiring and assignments compensation as separation minus section three, A number five, section three proviso West stipend B forty-five, B forty-six, section three, D one, section three, proviso West stipend B sixty-seven, and section five, A fifty-six.
It's only, I'm, I'm sorry, I was trying to follow, I know this part is running late. I believe it's section five, B sixty-seven, not three, B sixty-seven. I'm very sorry.
Section five.
I'm sorry.
Hundred and fifty.
Six seven.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. O'Pamplum?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Will Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Barbman, aye. Motion carried to approve minus those.
I forgot if you mentioned the name. Did we mention the name? Or just the number?
No, I wrote their names.
Uh, okay. I have a motion to approve the personnel report dated August, uh, August twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four concerning employee hiring assignments compensation and separation, section three, A, number five.
So move.
Second.
Jennifer, please call her on.
Mr. Alexander?
Discussion. Um, uh, once again, for, we haven't gotten clarification on the new status of operating procedures. We understand that Miss Martinez has now been placed by the board in charge of athletics at Proviso West. Um, even though we have a athletic director there and an athletic director at Proviso East. Um, once again, as I stated in closed session, there were some concerns as it related to a hiring of coaches. And there was clarification brought to the board as to what that discrepancy was with one particular coach. Now we are presented with coaches, and there is no clear, uh, no, no information provided to the board as to what was done to rectify that situation, what the new procedures are. And as we've seen this even, and as I said in closed session, we're presented with a coach that has been placed and thrust into a program that has been here for two years and has risen and succeeded. And we're being told by the administration that this new-
And we're being told by the administration that this new person supposedly is better qualified with no verbal or written qualifications to prove that. And as I said in closed session, in order for this person to be more qualified, they would have had to have coached with our students in that program for two years. Because that would be the height of the qualification, as we've heard from community comments this evening. But yet and still, we're placed here. It also shows a disconnect between the administration at West and the students and the coaches. And these situations did not persist prior to the, prior to the other two years, I'm sorry. So I would like to recommend to the board that we listen to the community and that we definitely do not move forward on this interim athletic director until we get more clarification as to what these roles will be. Um, how this is going to take this person out of this position and how we're gonna replace those positions, and also a cost analysis of what that's gonna cost the district. The motion's on the floor, so I would just, we don't have to table it. The floor, the motion, so I would just.
Any more comments?
Mr. Alexander?
Name?
Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Nay.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Valteras?
Nay.
Ms. Barbourhan?
Aye.
Motion carried.
May I have a motion to approve the personnel report dated August twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four concerning employees hiring and assignments compensation and separation? Section three, proviso West stipend, B forty-five.
Second.
I have one, one question, discussion, sir? The cost of giving adjustment?
He's getting.
Are we on five, B forty-five?
B forty, yeah, section three.
No, no, definitely.
Yes. Proviso West stipend, yeah. Discussion, any more discussion?
Sam, what, what, where are we at?
Section three. Yeah. Proviso West stipend, B forty-five.
I have set down as, as forty-five, that's the one I pulled, same.
Yes.
On page seven.
Not for us.
About left, somewhere, and, and that's up for discussion. Okay, once again, um, we, we, we tabled this and dealt with this issue of the boys' baseball coach at West. We've allowed this, this situation, I, 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 I know for a fact that Mr. Cox has spoken to me and advocated for this position for years. Um, had the position at one time and was replaced by a more qualified coach, which is a coach there. There's always been the contention that because he's a teacher, or whatever the case may be, that he feels he deserves that position. I do know for a fact that our athletic director did not recommend Mr. Cox for this position. And it is the athletic director's responsibility to recommend interview coaches prior to those duties being given to the principal. Now all of a sudden, we tabled this situation and now once again, he's been placed on here with no information as to why, nothing showing that he's more qualified, and no concern on how this is going to impact the students that have been coached consistently by a coach for two years. And if the board's not paying attention to the community, these young ladies have come out tonight to tell us the importance of the stability of their coaches and the people that have been in their lives. And we're just gonna arbitrarily change them with no justification or reason. And I know for a fact that this position was, has been contentious for some years as relates to this person that now has found themselves on this agenda. Uh, after Mr. McGinnis's responsibilities have been taken from him and he's been moved out the way to make this recommendation. This is not the person that he recommended for this position. Uh, the interviews and stuff were conducted, but I guess that just wasn't good enough.
Any more discussion? Janet, please call the room.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Nay.
Ms. Grant? Mr. Valteras?
Nay.
Ms. Barbourhan?
Aye.
Motion carried.
May I have a motion to approve the personnel report dated August twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four concerning employee hiring and assignments compensation and separation? Um, section three, proviso West stipend, B forty-six.
I'm sorry, I believe it's five, B forty-six, page eleven? Is that all?
That's correct.
So move. Second.
Discussion?
Discussion board?
Oh, it is.
Uh, once again, same thing, um. I said this years ago, we had this situation with the, uh, with the football coach. You know, it, it's, it's, it's really amazing to me in two thousand twenty-four that we have people that are in positions and pay good money to supposedly do what's best for our students that don't even talk to our students or our community and do not even have a pulse as to what's best. I don't know of any better example of what the community stands for and what the community needs than what we've seen in community comments today. And it's the direct opposite of what's being put in front of us as a board to vote on. And we've struggled, black folks have struggled in this community and in this school district for years, being told who's going to teach us, who's going to coach us, who has our best. We can speak and understand what we need as a people. But yet again, once again, someone with no seeming qualifications, we just have her name and she's down here. And had these young ladies not shown up tonight and this coach taking that time, this board wouldn't have voted for that. And this is what happens in our district all the time. Because unless people take their time to come out and tell us, we have a board and administration that is separate, not, not even in tune with the needs of these students and this district.
Yes, it is very important that the, the community comes out and let us know because we have families and the only time we sit here is actually on days like this where we get handed this book and we have to make decisions for the community. We, we don't work in the school, we have our own jobs and a lot of people think we work here, no, we're just like you, we're part of the community, we have a family. My kid goes to East. And if it's not for you parents, you students that come out and tell us what's going on, we don't know. So thank you for coming out. Any more discussion?
Discussion?
Yes.
Let me take this opportunity to thank you young ladies. I thank you for the courage that you took to stand before adults. Sometimes it's difficult to speak before adults. But I hear you and it does matter when you have a coach that you have a relationship with, somebody that I often have said to teenagers, there's always one person in this world that you can tell everything to, things that you wouldn't dare tell mom or grandma, you can, you, there's somebody that'll listen. And I want you to know I hear the listening here. And, "Coach, you don't deserve the treatment that you're getting." You worked hard with these young ladies for two years and someone walked, when no one was getting money and now they pulled you out of the way. For the young lady that says she was signing some document, don't sign anything that your mom is not aware of, okay? I will not be voting for this candidate because I hear you all. For it not be students, it would be no us. And I respect you, I respect what you had to say, and you deserve better. This whole board and this, this whole situation, everybody has talked about adults. No one talks about children. It was your parents that got me here, I work for you. And if it's not academic, you're not talking about academic achievement and student learning. See, you can get scholarships to college when you play, play football. She done got you here. So folks wanna walk in and say, "I, I," and did nothing. Yep. I commend you.
Any more discussion?
Discussion?
Go ahead.
I love election season.
Any further discussion?
Discussion. Uh, Mr. Alexander? I'm a black fan, I'm not running for the election, Amanda. So thank you for your sentiments and thank you for making my point. Thank you for making my point, it's a joke to you. I'm not running, Amanda.
You know what's going on?
So thank you, thank you, thank you for your, thank you for your.
You know what's going on, proviso West, you're too well known right now? You know, I'm with kids, I took off drugs. He'll tell you my first week of school, I made you.
This isn't against you at all.
But that's just, do you know how, do you know how hard I worked in at school? Do you know how much I protected my teammates every day?
But here's what I'm saying.
He'll tell you how hard I worked, I'm saying, tell him. Tell him what I did in school my first week.
He's born on this, watch your conscience, that's what I'm saying. We had the opportunity for discussion, that's all right. Uh, Janet, call the room.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Nay.
Ms. Patterson?
Nay.
Ms. Grant?
Nay.
Mr. Valteras?
Nay.
Ms. Barbourhan?
Nay.
Motion carried.
I have a motion to approve the personnel report dated August twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four concerning employee hiring and assignments compensation and separation. Uh, section.
Could you repeat that, I, I could hear?
Yeah, may I have a motion to approve the personnel report dated August twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four concerning employee hiring and assignments compensation and separation? Section three, D one.
So move. Second.
Janet, please call the room.
Thank you, everybody's good?
Uh, or discussion?
Can't, can't tell me the page, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's page two.
Oh, okay.
Special payroll, three.
David has a discussion.
Oh.
Yes. What was the cost of the meeting, just like three percent? Is that, is that mine?
Yeah, what, we approved the last board meeting.
That, it was, the last time it was approved was three point two on the last board agenda.
Yeah, Mr. Paul was on there because he was in the agenda for someone else and he wasn't included, so he doesn't have his.
He said three point two? Yes. Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm guessing, like, he was not included because he was on the agenda item for something else.
Correct, that is correct.
So they're just making him whole, hurt everybody else.
So I, I have a question, would that be an over job or salary with this three point two? You know what I mean, would you would be over the high?
This amount is not point two for some. Yes, this is, this would be the, the same as if he was on the list. Three point two. Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Valteras?
Aye.
Ms. Barbourhan?
Aye.
Motion carried.
May I have a motion to approve the personnel report dated August twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four concerning employee hiring and assignments compensation and separation? Section five, B sixty-seven, am I correct?
Yes, yes. Hi, Jen, this is.
And new? This was just polling.
Oh, oh, we're polling, okay, okay.
No, we've polled, we're voting on it now.
And, and it's, it's just.
Oh, you want, sorry.
Thank you, yes, sorry.
Can I make a motion?
May I have a mo- let me change my motion, I have a motion to table uh, section five, B sixty-seven, I'll be concerned agenda, or the, uh, I'll be concerned agenda. Personnel report.
So move. Second. Mr. Alexander?
Aye. Hold on, discussion, sorry.
Sorry.
Why, why are we pulling?
This one.
Okay.
That's the wrong.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson? Ms. Grant? Mr. Valteras?
Aye.
Ms. Barbourhan?
Aye.
Motion carried to table.
Great, this concludes the.
Uh, no more.
One more?
Three fifty-six, five, eight, fifty-six.
Uh, okay. May I have a motion to approve the personnel report dated August twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four concerning employee hiring and assignments compensation and separation, section
Aye.
five, eight, fifty-six.
So move. Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion, I will be recusing myself from this vote. Charles Patterson is my son, even though he's been taking photos for free for some.
Any more discussion? Janet, please call the room.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Mrs. Hickson?
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson refused, Ms. Grant?
Nay.
Mr. Valteras?
Aye.
Ms. Barbourhan?
Aye.
Motion carried.
This concludes the personnel report. I have a motion to adjourn, so move, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.